Julie Johnson, Human Services Supervisor and Personnel Analyst.
Nora Green, Human Resources Manager.
Jennifer Hardjehalson, City Council.
Debbie Hartzott, City Council.
Jeff Wagner, Mayor of Covington.
Sean Smody, City Council.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Dos Amomo, City Council.
Christina Solpas, City Council.
Casey Parker, Finance Director.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk.
Great, thank you all very much. Thank you for being here tonight. We're here to discuss the current operations, service gaps, and possible solutions for human services in the city of Covington. And who am I turning this over to? Julie?
I'll just kind of open it up a little bit. So over the last couple of years, as this current council knows, we've done a lot with human services compared to what we were doing before that. Just two, three years ago, we were at half FTE, running human services in the city. And now thankfully, we have two full-time FTEs doing that. But with that additional time and work and more of a robust offering that we're providing, gaps in the city have also been identified. And so tonight, what I asked Darren and Julie to come to present to council is, one, the work that they're doing, and a lot of that you're aware of, what those gaps are, and then some potential options to fill those gaps, if that's something council desires to do, and if now is the right time to do that with our general fund. Either way, it's going to be a good discussion to see what's going on, to see what they've identified as the gaps in our community. So with that, I think Julie will start with the presentation.
Yep. Yeah, so as Reagan said, let's just jump right into the current operations of what's currently going on. So Krista, if you could. Oh, thank you. So hopefully, we can just move through this quick and then start discussing. But, um, so as Reagan said, in 2022, I mean, my job has changed so much in the last couple of years. It's crazy. When I first started here, I was just doing contracts and, 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 you know, the liaison to the Human Services Commission. And now I'm running a community care program with Darren. So things have really changed. But as far as our current operations, I still am the staff liaison to the Human Services Commission. That has not changed. Um, contract management has changed a little bit. I still oversee the human services contracts. But in addition to that, I also oversee contracts associated with the Community Care Program and meet regularly with those agencies to support the program's success. I manage contracts that are associated with 1590, not all of them, obviously, but some of the portion of 1590 does trickle down to me that I manage. The 1406 contracts previously with, or has been with Vine Maple Place, manage that. Arpa funds, as you're well aware of, that is no longer, but at one point I was, well, actually, we're wrapping that up this year. I think it's called something different, though.
Arpa, not Arpa.
Arpa, not Arpa, okay? I can't keep up with that. Yeah. And then the opioid settlement, that is like an inconsistent pot of funding, but it kind of does fall on my lap is recommendations where that goes.
And just on that, I don't know if we have it later, but I think we brought in what, 14,000? It's not, not a lot, and we don't anticipate getting a lot, so there you go.
So then, just kind of summarizing, contracts are kind of involved process. You can see the bullets there. There's a lot that goes into contracting and, and what happens with those contracts. Again, the asterisks are new responsibilities added in the last three years. Obviously, the Community Care Program has been a huge addition. So recruiting and retaining agencies to support the Community Care Program, providing outreach. Darren does that, an excellent job of that, maybe a little too well because we've seen an increase in activity. But no, he does a great job with that. Monitoring all data associated with the clients served in Covington. So our Gelata software basically manages all of the individuals that Darren interacts with on a very confidential, compliant way. And then coordination of retraining of agencies. So one thing we're seeing is that not only with Gelata does Darren manage the data, he manages those that use Gelata, and those that use Gelata are the nonprofit agencies. And those nonprofit agencies have a lot of high turnover. So Darren is spending more time educating people and, and individuals that work for those agencies on how to utilize that software. Minor homework here, you're all familiar with that. The biggest thing that's changed is that it shifted to a public works process, and that process is a little bit more laborious. And so this has become an added addition in the last three years. And lastly, the major projects, I want to give a shout out to Central. They're actually here tonight. Thank you for showing up. But they did a great human services assessment with us. And Darren and I did help a little bit with that and coordinating the focus groups, helping with data, that type of things. And then the big project for this year, as you know, is the funding year, funding cycle. As far as service gaps, this is, of course, just kind of like what Darren and I talk about on a kind of weekly basis. We've met weekly ever since Darren first started because it's a program that has changed and grown rapidly. So we want to make sure we're communicating with each other. Our conversations revolve around the lack of data management. Again, we talked about the increased education with training gaps with Gelata. Training is needed for staff at, at those contracted agencies who utilize that. And then also, there's a gap in knowledge and data, as Central did for us. It's been 20 years since any official data had been collected, and in my opinion, that's too long. And I'd like not to see that happen again. Like, it's my opinion that we have more regular data collected. And I don't know exactly what the sweet spot is with that, but I know 20 years is too long. A hotel stay program for DV victims, I think we basically have this figured out because Recovery Navigators has stepped up to help with this. But Adam and I have talked about the need for a program for individuals that are in crisis with DV. This would be specifically for someone in a life-threatening situation. And RNP, which is the acronym for Recovery Navigators, may not always be available, so having a second agency to fill in for this likely would be ideal. This is kind of the catalyst for this conversation. What Darren is seeing, and he is doing amazing work, but when he goes out to the field, what he's seeing is an increase of individuals living in their cars. We can go down the rabbit hole of this, but basically, we've had several meetings with the church. And due to philosophical reasons and the capacity of cars in their parking lots, they just are not going to be able to meet city needs. And so here we are in this situation where we have cars parked in front of retail areas with no, no place to go. And so we need to kind of figure out, this is kind of like, if we're going to prioritize something, this is what we should prioritize. This is like, kind of a, kind of a big deal for us right now. As far as the Community Care Program, yes, this has really grown. Darren, in the last couple of months, has really seen an increase in activity. And I don't know why that is, whether it's just work gets out and people come here and they know Darren exists. So I feel like the conversation needs to be considered about getting Darren's more support out there. Also increasing Darren's safety by having a second person out there. The scope of coverage is limited. There's only one Darren, and we can only expect him to do so many days of the week. So potentially looking at increased coverage for days of the week or times. And then this is something just to consider that while Darren is doing a great job, having a female counterpart potentially could be a good thing, especially in a domestic violence situation, or if there's a female health issue. That might be kind of something to consider. Sounds like there's base.
It does.
Yeah. Wow, so much excited about this. Yeah. Um, you know, this slide is talking about communicated coordination within the city limits, or even just regionally, like between the tri-cities. At one point, there was some communication that started happening, I think, between the tri-cities that kind of died off. There was also some communication within city limits that the storehouse at one time was running, but that no longer exists either. But what I mean about coordinated communication are bringing together like churches in the area or people that provide services in the area, myself, Darren, police officers, coming together to talk about issues and kind of brainstorming possibly some responses in a coordinated approach to what's going on in the city and not just relying on Darren or just relying on the police, but coming together as kind of a cohesive group. Something Central pointed out in their assessment was a lack of awareness, and that is really true. I know our website isn't always updated. I know I did have to help updating the brochure, but I just don't think that there's enough work being done on the lack of awareness about resources. We were at one point doing resource fairs. That kind of fell off the radar, just to my workload. I couldn't handle doing it this year with assessment and this being a funding year. And then general and regular outreach to resources to the community, ideas are going to the library more often, or that type of thing. So since Darren has come on board, there's human services has grown, and our master plan is definitely not with the commission, is not describing the work that we're doing in human services accurately from a comprehensive level because it doesn't include what Darren is doing. And it doesn't really include data that's up to date that can inform our funding decisions, such as the general funds, the 1590, the 1406. And so our human services master plan really needs to be revamped altogether. Because of all this work, it's kind of shifted to me. I feel like Darren and I also like need administrative support in some capacity. And so that's just kind of what this slide is about. So possible solutions. This is a lot of information to take in, and possible solutions, there might even be something that I didn't think about. So I just left it like, open this up to, you know, whoever would come up with something. But a few of the ideas that Darren and I have talked about are possibly a city-run safe car parking program. Now, this is their pros and cons to this, but this is a solution potentially. I say 30,000 because that's just a ballpark. I kind of worked off of what St. John's budget was, and I'll pass this around. So it'd be $20,000 per case management for this. Yes, for three spots, three or four, I think about. And then I can pass this out, but that's basically kind of what that would look like. And then having a staff member to kind of support all of these service gaps, that would be about 153, 110, I worked with Casey to get that number. And then the other and third idea is expanding contracts with agencies to better meet the needs. So for example, Recovery Navigators is an agency that Darren works with every single day. Their Arpa funding is running out. They have dedicated funding, or yeah, dedicated funding to Covington and the area. And so we kind of want to secure contact with Recovery Navigators. So if we're not able to hire a staff person, that Darren still has that support out there, even if their Arpa funding is running out. And so that's just an example, but I've done a lot of talking, and I know it's like hard to remember everything that I mentioned or talked about, so I did create a summary sheet. On the front is the current operations. On the back is the service gaps and possible solutions. So feel free to take a look at that. And then this is the Human Services Reconciliation Document that Casey created. It kind of shows the expenses and revenues for human services over the timeframe from 2020 to 2024. Casey'd be a lot better to talk about this document than I would. So I'm just, but I'm just going to pass this out as well. So I've just put a ton in your path. Darren, did you have any other comments about anything?
No. I think you pretty much summarized everything that I just. If anybody has any questions, I think it's fine to turn it page on, on the partnership with the GoPro Service. That such as partner agencies can provide.
Regan, did you have any comments?
So I do have a question real quick about this. Safe car parking. Respect.
Yeah.
So it's.
I know, the volume needs to be turned down.
The so I know that St. John the Baptist is full.
Is.
Have we reached out to the other safe car parkings that are in Kent and Auburn as well?
I did. I reached out, yes, and they both said no.
Okay, so they're full as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The safe car parking also at St. John's takes individuals from Kent, Bellevue, all around the area. So it's not just to support Covington. And at the inception of that program, I think the original intent maybe was to just to support Covington because there was a lot of community partners involved in creating that. That's just really evolved over the years. So now it's really open to like South King Cities.
Okay, I have a few questions. I might have more. Hopefully, other people have the same questions. Okay, so which contracts do we have through the Community Care Program?
Okay, so that would be AHA. That would be Recovery Navigators. Well, actually, we're not contracted with Recovery Navigators just yet.
Not current.
Not currently. Our hope is to be.
We would need to be if we want to continue using their services after this year because their Arpa funds in which they're using to provide the services now are running out.
Right, so they would need money from us.
And is that part of the human services ask, the contracts that they're looking at?
As one of the options, yes.
Sorry, Jess.
Okay, so AHA.
RNP, Vine, well, Vine Maple Place. So we've identified agencies as strategic partners. And we're kind of like cultivating this terminology, I guess, if you will, because there's some agencies that rise to the surface as being more supportive than others, specifically for the work Darren's doing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so Vine Maple Place would be a strategic partner. Is it, I think the storehouse also is a strategic partner. Yeah, so.
Okay, and then how many agencies do we fund? In addition to these?
Thirty-five.
And, yeah, I mean, my brain's just thinking, obviously, it cuts down on work if you put more money out if you were ready strategically. And then Gelata, are we expecting each of these agencies to use this software?
So each of the strategic partners where relevant, I have the aspect of AHA because they provide sort of a short-term care coordination slash case management. While somebody, like I pick up, if I were to contact somebody on the street, they would come out, they would pick them up, take them back there. They kind of have their own needs assessment they go through, and then they place them into a housing unit based on that need, the assessment revealed, and then they start working with them over the course of three months. And so throughout those three months, I'm asking that they, you know, put progress reports into Gelata, HIPAA compliant and CFR. So I can view and confirm that they are continuing to make progress as they're going through the program. That could include job attainment and filling out various.
So only AHA is doing this?
AHA, and then RNP is presently.
Okay, okay, and I'm asking from a cost standpoint and the turnover comment. I mean, I, I get that if we were expecting like all thirty-five agencies to do that.
Oh, no, it's just a strategic partner.
Not, okay.
Yeah, it's just.
And then safe car parking. You know, I remember years ago, because you guys know this is a soapbox. Reagan making it clear to me, and I did not disagree, but it was, it was a very like firm line. The city does not provide human services. The city is a city. We support organizations, we support residents, but this is not our expertise, running safe car parking, doing background checks. I mean, there's a lot more than just providing parking spots and fuel cards, right? Like, it's the safety of the people that are there, the safety of the residents. The comment that those cars are also potentially related to retail theft concerns me. Like, that's, that is something that St. John's ensures if there's the people that are there are not causing harm to the other people there. And that's, that would be my major concern, not just from a liability standpoint. Yes, that's, as a city council member, but from a human perspective, we have a responsibility to, when we say safe car parking, that's really safe. And are we really the people that can guarantee that? So, I mean, what are your thoughts about that?
I propose more of a modified, kind of moving away from the model that St. John's had, and it's one that was more of like a permit, you know, and that triage folks, as opposed to like, this is.
Any person showing up.
Any person showing up, and so.
Because the issue is, the biggest issue is, is that when Darren's like, for example, at Kohl's, there was someone parked there for a whole week in front of Kohl's, and we tried to get them into safe parking for a whole week, and they couldn't get in. So now we have someone parked in front of Kohl's. And so it's like, so now what do we do? And so if Auburn and Kent are both saying, no, we won't take your people, they're still stuck at Kohl's.
I know, I mentioned this maybe a couple of months ago. Have we, as, as humans, or, you know, you guys, have you, have you two reached out to other organizations to see if there is an interest? Because I know I said, you know, if, if no one knows there's a need, especially organizations whose mission is to, to provide basic human, you know, needs. Does anyone even know besides you two?
I'm not sure I know what you're asking.
Do, does the entire community know that we have this gap and this need? Have we given organizations the opportunity to say, oh, hey, we would like to do what St. John's does?
I have not.
Anyone know, right?
Like, like other churches.
Yeah.
Other nonprofits. That's, so that we as a city, like, I understand where Jennifer's coming from.
Like, if you don't know,
Yeah.
because a lot of these groups, you know, some of us at the table are involved in, that's what, that's what you do. You look for something that needs to be done, and you go and do it. And I just don't know if people know that, that our community needs this, and so that's my question. Do you think, or do you know if people know before we jump in and potentially try to solve it by running it ourselves?
Like Vine Maple Place, would they have the opportunity to do something like that?
We've kind of put out some like feelers a little, do you want to?
Yes, we've kind of thought and envisioned and reached out to Salvation Army as one potential source. And then most predominantly, because of we, in the, the need that the assessment kind of revealed this like role of a boundary spanner, somebody who can kind of be multi-disciplinary, because a lot of these folks have, but just, you know, mental health needs, maybe substance abuse needs, maybe they need to apply to different programs. And so we thought of utilizing them already because we're working on building a partnership that's pretty strong with them.
With Recovery Navigators.
With Recovery Navigators to kind of help facilitate either a safe car park or some aspect of it where we would just take like a triage model that would help, you know, abdicate some of the risk, you know, being taken on by the city.
With Salvation Army, though, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to provide the space. They would run the program. We would have to provide the space, is that right? And in answer to one of your other questions, Jennifer, when this, which was predated Julie and Darren, when Richard and I were first working on with St. John's on the current safe car parking, there were some other churches that we reached out to, and so I know they've been aware of it. Whether pastors have changed or whatnot, and current ones are aware, I don't know that, but there has been outreach in the past, but.
Yeah, I'm curious. I mean, there's that group of pastors that need, right? There's also the opportunity when we're giving city updates, when, you know, we can share these survey results. We can say this is the most pressing need in our community, you know, anytime we're talking in, in front of anyone, and, and obviously not just you two. It's not like you put a big banner up. I'm not just, I'm not saying, you know, you market human service feeds, but yeah, I just want to ensure we're covering all of our bases because a lot of times, especially in more needs-based environments, volunteer organizations, we do a really great job of doing something, but we never do a good job of marketing or advertising. That is where we fall down, especially in high-need areas because it's a hard thing to advertise. People don't pay attention to the rules, right? So, okay, I think that's my last question for now. Thank you.
I do have a question about sifting through. So currently, do you know how many Covington residents are in need of this? Or is the plan to, you know, create a modified triage and then find out?
Sure, I can come up with a number off the top of my head. I mean, I'm encountering, I want to say at least two to three people that are at any given time. And then you subtract from that their willingness to participate, you know, because there's usually a period of time where I have to work with the person to build a rapport, get them to accept. That's just kind of what I've observed. But I would say it's been about two to three a week that are homeless, maybe one or two would accept it in a week.
But, and, and what I mean is not that they're just in Covington.
Right.
Do you know that they are Covington residents?
That's not how.
Well, I'll, I'll inject, if they're homeless, there really isn't a specific residence spot, so we can't really, can't really provide that for you.
Not that I'm trying to discriminate, but like to.
Right.
Their data.
Like, like maybe what's on their driver's license, because if they're driving, they should at the very least have a driver's license.
Especially.
I know, but.
Yeah.
A couple of questions. Julie, I know your title includes Personnel Analyst. What portion of your time is not dedicated to human services?
It's just a small amount with the Wellness Committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just internally, it's.
Yeah.
Very teeny-frimey.
All right, thank you. And then with, with other agencies coming online, and I don't know time-wise if we're looking two years out, three years out, but we've got UGM planning to build here, and then we've got the Community Care Centers coming online. There will be five in Puget Sound. I don't know how.
The crisis.
Pardon?
The crisis.
Crisis care clinic, yes, thank you. I don't know how, where they're going to be located yet, or if there'll be one right in our area, but are there things that we can potentially maybe set aside and say, if we can just hold this, you know, for another year or two, these type of services could go to crisis care clinics. These type of services could go to UGM. I also note that you, you brought up the DB cases, and does victim services support you for any of those?
So I don't want this to come across, I, I don't think it's a lack of services. We have services. It's a lack of staff, like being able to connect people to services.
Sorry.
Except for safe cars.
Except safe car. We do not have a safe car.
Okay.
We do not.
And I was thinking, UGM may, may, that might be a good fit for them. That, that's something we'd have to start talking about early on, space, you know, good space, but.
Are they?
Last we heard, they're still moving forward, but.
We, we have an agency like pretty interested in the safe car parking and supporting that. So I, I think we have that pretty well covered if that moves forward.
Of having another agency for the 30,000?
Yes, Recovery Navigators is interested in that, already works with Darren. So I think that's pretty well covered if we move forward with it.
We would just have to provide the space.
Yes.
Nope, that's it.
Uh, let Joe go first.
She, she probably knows where I'm going and then wants to be the good guy on this conversation. I, I'm joking. Saturday, we're going to talk about funding all day. And I, I hate to be the one that says this, but we have to find 541. And I, I hate to be the one that says this, but we have to find five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to cut. We're asking, this is an ask of, if I'm looking at this thirty thousand, which could be more because it doesn't include the insurance costs, so this could be anywhere from. Another, you know, forty to a hundred thousand dollars grand total. And a new person's can be another hundred and fifty-three thousand, so we're looking at anywhere from a hundred and eighty to quarter a million dollars. And I do not deny that these things are needed, we need another person to help Darren would be great, another person to help you Julie would be amazing. Where are we looking to get these funds? That's the question I think we have to ask before we can move anywhere forward. I want these services in this city, I want us to be able to help, I want us to. If, if an agency is willing to come in here and run a safe car parking spot, that's great, we just have to, you know, if we can find the plate, the land for it, the parking lot for it, that's great. But if we can't pay for it, then it's all for naught. Where are we?
Our job.
I know, that is our job, but where are we, when we have to cut half a million dollars? Where are we gonna come up with a quarter of a million dollars to do this? So I'm just, I'm just, the real question is, can we? Survive where we're at right now for another year? Or is this an immediate, like, we need this person online in the next two and a half, three months? Or we need the safe car parking online in the next two and a half, three months, is this the immediate? Thing, so what, on Saturday, when we're looking at our funding? Do we move funding from one area to cover this, or is this one of those ones that we a hundred percent need to have in the budget for next year? That's, that's the real question I'm trying to find out.
I think it's honestly up to you guys. It's your priority, it's your city, I mean, we've informed you of what's going on and I respect and understand your, like, the budgetary, like. I work at the city, I get it. I'm like, I get it. And that's kind of, you know, the tough conversation, but what I expected honestly to hear. And so, but I do think part of the whole reason of having this is to get the council's priorities. It's up to you, is what I'm saying, like, it's not really up to us, I think we presented you with the data and, and what we see as issues and. Uh, you guys have a tough job, in my opinion.
I mean, I, first of all, I just want to say thank you all because I know this was, this is a, a new thing for us and we're going in the realms that, like, the city hasn't. Had the special expertise that engages with, um. Folks that need help, we usually just contracted it out or given money to other organizations, so, um. I am wondering, and I'm going back to that safe car parking thing, just because you said that was kind of a, a, maybe a priority need. Uh, outside of the operational and the staff support. And also had made the comment that Saint John's takes people that aren't in Covington, right? But then now we're talking about how do you decide if they were from Covington and. I think it's average three month, two to three month stay, I mean, I don't know, maybe a few, some of them stay longer. Yeah, I mean, some of them stay longer, but like, is there an opportunity to help fill that gap by saying? The next person you have leave, we've got somebody ready to go. That is a Covington resident or somebody that we wanna serve, and I know we had just said that it's hard to determine residency. But if, the way I'm seeing it is how can we, is there an opportunity to make some resource shifts? Or manage that flow so that. It might buy us some time, like Joe said, if we're not able to spend thirty grand on a, or more on a safe car parking, can we help? With that, I, hypothetical.
Yeah, so I, I think the backup plan that we kind of envisioned was with, working with RNP to develop a, some of that support. You know, uh, we've requested of them that they provide a project manager of sorts that would be committed a certain amount of hours to. To this program and provide both case management and um, field assistance for, for me. Um, and kind of help uh, take more of a harm reduction approach. You know, cause I think the, one of the big concerns that I have and when I interact with folks is these encampments become exponential. And if one person shows up and then another shows up and then another, and so it's imperative for me to try to get these. People placed into a shelter or whatever, um, as soon as possible.
And, and typically because of that exponential, the Saint John's is full. And it's not really meeting our need of the triage. We can't be waiting a whole week.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Right, they don't have one always open.
No.
Right.
Question, so. Well, I under. So I understand why, you know, we're talking about, we've got the. We have a budget shortfall that we have to look at. We have to look at. Where we come up with the money, what organization that we wanna work with, cause we, I personally feel as a city, we can't run this ourselves. We need to have people who are experts or who know what to do, not saying that you don't know what to do, but that have the expertise to do that. But, and I know we're, we're just having a conversation and generalizing, but one thing we need to look at is. We can't say, well, can we wait a year, can we wait, these are people. Imagine yourself in that car is, can I wait a year? I'm not saying that we can come up with the money to do this, but is there other solutions, and I know Darren, you work and Julie. Pardon the language, but you work very hard. And to help people get, to give them some confidence and. To help them be able to feel better about themselves, to get them off the street, cause some of the people. And I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna ask you who, who, but I, I've run into situations when I used to work with Find Maple Place to help out. It's a lot of women with children in their cars who have left a domestic violence situation and they're trying to hide. And that's the only way they can hide is by being in that car, cause that way they can move around. So, you said, Julie, that it is in, to be considered in the human services budget? I mean, you know, they're going through the organizations, through the, the four, five inch thick.
Yeah, that binder.
It's, the binder seems to look thicker, they're. And I always appreciate you bringing that, cause it reminds me how much you're looking. But it's. I mean, do we increase? The human services budget to offer that, because if we don't, I'm just talking about the thirty thousand. That means somebody else gets cut. Now, there may be organizations that aren't helping us where we need to be, and that's the role of our awesome human services commission that. You look at all that, look at the data quarterly, every six months to see who's making sure they're helping Covington and stuff, but. I just wanna make sure that we're helping people as much as we can, but I, I personally, I agree with Jennifer, I, we as a city cannot run that. Um, and I don't know where we would find land, we'd have to work with another church. Or somebody to do that, because it would be their insurance and stuff. To do that, and I, I don't, I understand needing another staff person. Um, that would probably have to wait, uh, until we have our discussion on Saturday. To see what, cause we would have to cut something else to bring that in.
So then just to follow up, cause I was, I'm sure we're all thinking of it. And as the Human Service Commission is going through prioritizing the grant.
Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Um, are you having a scenario of if, is there a way to find the thirty? By not funding maybe another organization that maybe isn't. Making the impact of the priority of what we found out from that survey and what we feel like will have the most positive impact on the people that live within our city limits.
Yeah.
Is that kind of your lens now moving forward, knowing what you know and, and?
I think, yeah, so, and then the reconsideration of possibly like redirecting some fifteen ninety dollars. So, can we use some of those funds? Because those are for mental health and.
You know, and that was my other question too, because, you know, that thing, all that thing. Four years, right, it's been four years and it was, you know, we had very strict guidelines of how much of that money collected could go towards X, Y, and Z. I'm saying we maybe advocate at state level to get that changed, so that if we need more to help with people that have. I mean, that's a housing issue, right? Somebody living out of their car is homeless, how are we gonna, like, is there a way of, um, maybe change the way, some of that, and I know we can't do it without legislation. That changes that, but is there an opportunity?
You could put a hundred percent of it towards housing, um, but you're required to do at least sixty percent of it. Which is what we're doing, the other forty percent we're using for all the work they're doing.
Right, right, so, I didn't know if there was an opportunity.
We, we do have, this is about five hundred and ninety thousand?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
If you look at our, um, what we bring in each year versus what we spend on our, um. On like Darren's base budget type thing, we have about ten thousand dollars left over each year. But what we do have is before Darren started, we had a few years where we were collecting revenues and holding on to them, so we have some like. One-time pot of money, about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that could be used for. A, a lower cost contract for six, I can float it for sixteen years, or, um, a, uh. A big one-time thing, and we've got that pot of funds sitting there that can be used for something, it's just a, a staff person would, you know.
Use it, look.
Yeah.
So is that something that we can discuss during our budget workshop on Saturday?
Yeah, I, I think we can discuss that, I think we should also discuss the issue of, I think it's the fourteen oh six. Going to Find Maple Place, that maybe we redirect that to AHA and RNP, right?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll come with something that we can discuss about that there too.
And then we meet with Human Services Commission, uh, December, was it the ninth? The first one in December?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't we normally meet with them sooner?
I know, yes, not this year though. Yes, but we can maybe move it up, I don't know, I don't know if there's space.
If there's any, we'd have to bump something else, yeah.
I mean, that's our last.
That's the last.
That's the last meeting and we've decided the budget.
We decide the budget, that's the same night.
Yeah.
But we, well, we just start discussing our budget to give staff direction of where we wanna go on Saturday. And then we discuss it during the two council meetings in November to bring back in December for the final bus vote. So if we wanna change. What amount of money goes to human services or where we wanna direct things, we need to give the direction on Saturday.
We can do that Saturday.
We need to do that Saturday so that staff can prepare that and bring it back for discussions during our November meetings for a final vote in December.
Correct. Did you have any questions?
I thought you were sick up there.
No, yeah, exactly. Part of me, I'm just, you know, kinda reading the room and I'm just like, oh man, you know. But I, I think the, the central assessment will help, but did I understand correctly that when we go out. Um, to support these. Uh, facilities that are providing human services, we set strategic priorities for them. How often do we reassess those? And I think this gets Jennifer's. Is safe car parking, you know, listed in one of those emergency housing, you know, type things, that we need a program like this. Um, I, I would say at a minimum, we might wanna look at how, what our current priorities are for. The most critical resources and unfortunately, if some groups that we've been traditionally funding. No longer fit within those strategic priorities, we might have to, we're gonna shuffle this money. Into what we see as a more critical need right now, so, I'm just, I guess assuming that's something we do.
Yeah, no, I always have a problem with safe car parking, not because I don't want it. I would rather have somebody living in an apartment. Of course.
And that's where UGM will fill that gap, they won't be.
Those plans are beautiful, that's what people build. That's like for women.
Yeah.
But the women and kids are up in. Well, are kids gonna be in, well, that's. At the, it'll be women and children in Covington. So, and there's a facility for men down in, or there used to be in Kansas.
I think it's.
You have a question?
No, I have so many questions, but not for tonight.
I just have one, please refresh my memory, what are we doing with the money from the state tax? That was going to go to King County?
That's fifteen ninety.
That's fifteen ninety, okay, thank you.
How much is currently our budget that we have for human services?
Hundred, like the hundred, so the Human Services Commission or?
Yeah, out of our general fund that we give to the human.
Hundred thirty-six thousand.
Hundred and thirty-six thousand, okay. And how long is that bit?
Uh, it's probably been three or four years since we bumped it to that amount, roughly.
Yeah, I think we've been fortunate with all these other revenue streams to help support it.
Yeah.
And not maybe taking action from our. Base budget to just continually increase, continually increase, I mean, I'm not saying it was a wrong decision, it's just. Right.
Do you know, and maybe this is appropriate or not to ask, but what does RNP need to stay? The, the fund, the amount, do we know what they're asking for?
Um, the current idea we've had is, um, a contract built off of hours per week. So, it would be like fifteen to twenty thousand a year. For eight to ten hours a week.
So that's something that they could potentially submit to the.
Yes.
I guess I'm asking, have they, maybe I'm not perfect to know this, but they've submitted something, correct though?
No, it's just been in talks because we weren't sure what direction you guys wanted to go, but it's definitely like, if we said, yes, we want this. They would be like, okay, we're, yes, let's do it.
That doesn't include safe, for them to run the safe car parking.
Um, yeah, that is included in the safe car parking.
So we would just need the location?
Uh, yeah, we would need the location and the insurance, yes.
So that.
It, it's a portion of the safe car park.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's a portion, yeah.
But do they, would, does RNP provide other services besides safe car parking?
They provide comprehensive case.
Okay.
Yes.
You, you'll, you'll see in the, um, the updates I send you from information from Darren. They're involved in almost every case that Darren's working on.
And I appreciate those updates. Darren's like a hidden gem that we have, and we only see him every once in a while.
Well, he's hidden, so you can't.
But I see him out in the air out, when I'm out and about, I do see Darren and then he's gone.
He's like a chameleon.
Yeah. Oh, there's karma, okay, yeah.
So what they're requiring is three or four parking spots with. Bathroom facility, clean water, electricity, secure, so that, like, plug in. Plug in their cell phones or any of that, or no, what, what, what do they, what do they feel is required and, uh, to make that?
We, we haven't gotten so far as to get that low commitment from an agency, I propose modifying that model. Just kind of what is it exactly they need to be tr- to triage?
Right, yeah, I mean, there might be their day or two because they're not gonna, you know.
Yeah.
So they probably need a bathroom, at least.
Shower and.
The plug is nice though. Yeah, plug in for their phones and electronics and stuff.
That's, I think that's critical.
Yeah, okay.
I think the difference maybe with our potential safe car parking could be that. Darren already has established kind of this graduated rehousing. So there's a straight line from our parking to AHA. And there's beds saved at AHA now for us, so if they wanted, they could go from the parking. Straight into the housing. And I know that other agencies operate in a similar fashion, but I don't know the other. Um, like car parking have like beds saved, that's a very special contract.
Right, right.
So we kinda have that.
So to get through the night or day, you need to be able to go to the bathroom, wash your hands and, yeah, there's certain basic things they'll need before they.
Do the beds at AHA, are they for kids also, or they're strictly adults?
They do have family units.
Family units, okay.
And do they need to be in recovery? I mean, it, thus their name, AHA is. They don't have to be in an addiction.
There's four tiers, so, um, based on individual needs, it runs a gamut for folks who just maybe lost their job. To folks that have mental health or some comorbid mental health and substance abuse and some folks with, uh. Physical health limitations, wheelchair.
At AHA.
At AHA.
Yeah.
So, I, I appreciate all this and, uh, appreciate you taking the time to identify the. Critical needs that we have in our community, uh, that's how we want this commission in, in human services. Critical needs that we have in our community, uh that's how we want this commission in human services. Work to to work, um I'm wondering if we could spend a little bit of time maybe going forward. Thinking, how are other cities funding their human services, um are they? Are 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 there? Strategies, are there, uh and I don't know, Washington untapped revenue sort of, it's got to be other ways to raise funding for this program that, you know. We're just not thinking about, um so we're really good at identifying what we need and where we lack. Just spend a little time saying, what are, how are these other cities doing it, and maybe they're not, but I'm just. I think that side of the revenue, that the ledger would be good to see, you know, it would be good to think about that. We're actually in a much better position than most of our other city counterparts, because we acted quick and got the fifteen ninety funds. So that gave us, what, seven hundred, something thousand more a year that uh or whatever it is. That that uh there's only a few cities in the whole, in King County that acted quick enough to get that, so. Uh by a percentage base, we do really, really well, percentage of our budget that goes to human services. But if there's, you know, other other ways, we find other ways to fund our roads, we find other ways to fund our police, you know. If there's other things going on, um there are other things cities are doing to raise funding. Or some ways to fund our arts, you know, when when we ever get a hotel, you know, we've got a hotel tax. So it'd be interesting just to see what, and I'm not even thinking just Washington, what what other communities doing, so.
Any other questions? We're running short here. Julie and Darren, thank you very much for bringing this, it's was I, for me, it was eye-opening. Um to hear what attention service gaps are, well, not potential, the service gap that we have. But potential ways, solutions that we can do, so.
Thank you, thank you for hearing us out.
Oh, yeah, no, we appreciate that. But that way we have it ahead of time before our budget discussion on Saturday, so thank you. All right, with that, there's no other further questions, uh this study session is adjourned and we will start our council meeting at seven P M.